Thank you. Richard, are you planning to use a helmet for some portion of this meeting? Okay, all right, remember you guys, if you're muted, you have to unmute before we can hear you. Okay, so we're good to go, so. I'm calling this meeting to order, this is Tuesday, June 16th, 2020 Lincoln City Planning Commission meeting. James, could we have a roll call, please?
Marcy Baker?
Here.
Kim Blackerby?
Here.
Josh Brainerd is not here. Patty Crowen?
Here.
Glenny Nelson?
Yep.
Miles Flissinger?
Here.
Max Smith?
Here.
Okay. Any agenda changes or revisions?
No.
Okay. We have the minutes from our June 2nd meeting, their brief, as the meeting was. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 2nd, 2020 Planning Commission meeting?
Moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Miles, any discussion? All in favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay, those are cast. I don't think we have any final orders, resolutions, do we have any written communications? Emery?
We do not.
Okay. So we're moving then to our one public hearing that we have tonight, so it is now, oh, where's my clock, 6:03. The hearing is now open to accept public comment on file ZOA 2020-01 Procedures. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title 17, creating a new chapter, Chapter 17.76 Procedures. Commissioners, are there any abstentions or disqualifications based on conflict of interest or personal bias? Okay, seeing none. All right. To the public, if you wish to provide testimony, please email it to askinner@lincolncity.org. That's askinner@lincolncity.org, and it will be read into the record. The email should include your name and address, the hearing that you are providing testimony for, and whether you are testifying in opposition, in support, or neutral to the hearing in question. Staff, please present your report.
Thank you. This ordinance amendment is an attempt to organize and make things consistent for processing applications, land use applications. Briefly, a little bit of just formalities. Notice of the public hearings was sent to all property owners of record within city limits on February 26th, 2020, and notice of the public hearings was published in the NewsGuard on March 4th, 2020 and March 11th, 2020. The public hearing before city council is going to city council next Monday, so there won't be a planning commission meeting in between this one and and the city council meeting, with the hope that tonight's hearing from Planning Commission will result in a recommendation either for or against or with changes. So the pressure's on. Currently, Title 17 refers to each individual land use application in various chapters and sections throughout the entire title. There is not one specific place that provides a concise, consistent, and organized listing of the types of land use applications and procedures for processing each. And this amendment hopes to rectify that situation by compiling the land use applications into one chapter, which will be a new chapter called Applications. The Applications won't be new, it's just that the chapter will be new, and it will place all the applications that we have now into that chapter for ease of reference. And then the procedure type will be in one chapter, and that chapter exists right now, it's Chapter 17.76, and it's called Procedures. So this amends Chapter 17.76. The intent is to provide a consistent, transparent, and organized process for land use actions that is more navigable and understandable than the current system. The draft language that was attached did not in ordinance form. As Commissioner Nelson has pointed out, the formatting is not consistent, and I recognize that. The formatting will be made consistent as well as making sure that there aren't any duplicates of sections or numbering or lettering. That'll all be done by the city attorney and his assistant. This is to get the substance of the language before the planning commission. So, in essence, right now we have lots of different applications. We have a home occupation application, we have a site plan review application, preliminary plat application, lot line adjustment application, flood plain development review application, geotechnical report application. I mean, I can go down the list, but in most jurisdictions in Oregon, and also in Washington, each of those applications is organized into one of four types. And those types are procedure types. So Type 1 is referred to as a ministerial procedure. Those are very basic, cut and dried, no nonsense, there's no questions. Basically, it's black and white. Examples include home occupation application. Does the zone allow home occupations, yes or no? That's a very easy, black and white answer, there's no judgment involved. Those are the types of applications that are Type 1 procedures. Type 2 procedures apply to administrative permits and applications. Those decisions are based on reasonably objective criteria, requires limited discretion in applying the approval criteria. Type 2 procedures require a public notice and an opportunity for appeal, but there is no public hearing. The Type 3 procedure, which are the ones that come before Planning Commission, those are referred to as, also known as quasi-judicial. And those decisions are made by the appointed or elected review authority. They require substantial exercise of discretion and judgment in applying the approval criteria. Accordingly, along with the public notice, they also require one or more public hearings. Then the Type 4 procedure applies to legislative. Legislative decisions are made by the city council. The city council takes into consideration a recommendation from the Planning Commission. Those involve the adoption or amendment of policy by ordinance, which is what we're hearing right now, this is a legislative, so under this would be a Type 4 procedure. Legislative decisions may also apply to applications involving a large geographic area containing many properties, and they require public notice and one or more public hearings. And I want to emphasize that this ordinance doesn't, it doesn't change the way we're doing everything, it just organizes it into something that's easy to explain to folks who come to the counter or to call with questions. Gives them a reference point to say, I want a home occupation application, what's involved in that? Oh, well, look, in Chapter 17.76, it's a Type 1 procedure. Let's go down and let's look and see what the Type 1 procedure tells us. And then this ordinance for each of the procedures, it gives a general description, when it's applicable, if a pre-application conference is required, the application requirements, the public notice requirement, the review authority, the notice of decision, the effective date, the appeal period, and then the decision expiration. And so it's all organized right here in this chapter for procedures, and it just, it makes it easier to refer people to and easier for staff to administer by having it all here in 17.76 in an organized fashion. The, I compiled all of the different types of applications into a table and identified the procedure type. And again, the procedure type, it's the same way that we do it now. So for instance, conditional use permit application, I've called it Procedure Type 3. The process is the same, it's quasi-judicial, and that's, and we not making any changes to the process itself. It's more just a name change, for lack of a better explanation. Development review application, that, I changed the name of site plan review to development review application. Type 2, which is the same as it is now, it's an administrative procedure. I'm not going to go through all of these. Mobile food unit, home occupation, those are Type 1, those are very basic. Staff looks at those now, and so again, nothing is changing. I identified a non-conforming determining right now, determining a non-conforming use. There's some very broad language in Chapter 1764 regarding determining a non-conforming use. Leaving it really open to interpretation. By just making it a Type 2, it's now not open to interpretation. That's the other thing that this amendment hopes to do is to provide clarity to some of these items that currently exist in Title 17 that don't have clarity. And so when I read them, or when staff reads them, we have to put our heads together and think, okay, what does this mean? And then three hours later, we have to come up with a decision and then hope that we remember what that decision was when the question comes up again. And that's not a good ordinance, and that's not a good way of administering applications. And so this amendment will get rid of all that ambiguity and, and again, make it much more transparent and clear to everyone, more cut and dried. So, the table goes through all of our different applications types and gives them a 1 through 4 procedure type. And then the next portion of the Chapter 17.76, like I said, it just, it gives the general description, the application requirements, the public notice, et cetera, for each of the four procedure types. So it's all spelled out there very clearly for everyone to see. So, when someone goes to this chapter and they're going to do a conditional use permit, they can go to the table and they can say, okay, conditional use permit, Type 3, review authority is Planning Commission. And then they can go right down to 17.76.050, Type 3 procedure. And it tells them, this is the description, this is when it's applicable. Pre-application conference is not required, but is encouraged. Here's what I need on my application, here's what's involved in the notice. Here's the appeal period. And it does that for each of the four. And then, the end of the chapter provides a description for initiating an application, procedure for withdrawing an application. It provides guidelines for pre-application conferences, which we don't have now, and we need. It provides a process for the application submittal and completeness review, which we don't have now and very badly need. And then it provides guidelines for conditions of approval, nexus and proportionality, challenging of those conditions, modifying those conditions, none of which we have now. And so it just puts staff in the position of having to make a lot of decisions that staff shouldn't be making. Effective date of decision, expiration date of decision, and then a table for the expiration date of all four types and the extensions that are allowed, and the process for the extensions. Then it goes on to compile the public hearing procedure, which we do have now, so this is just just putting it into this revision. Oh wait, and I see that I have a 17.70, that should be 17.76. The appeal procedure, and then Chapter 17.77 is a new chapter, and it takes all of our applications and puts them in to one place again, so that if someone wants to do... That didn't get, I made some last minute changes and I see that they didn't get included in the packet to the adjustment. So for instance, the adjustment application, it gives the procedure, the submittal requirements, the approval criteria, conditions of approval, appeal, expiration, and extension, and refers you back to the applicable section in Chapter 17.76. And then it does that for all of our applications, for annexation, for appeals, bed and breakfast application, comprehensive planning app amendment, conditional use permit. Again, and the conditional use permit. This is not changing any of the approval criteria or the process from the chapter that it's in now. It's just moving it into this Chapter 17.77, so that all the applications are in the same place. And...
Max, do you have a question, Max?
Just, I, more to the point, I noticed any criteria for the adjustment under Section C number 1 and 2 are blank.
Yeah, and I, it must not have, because I changed that, and I must not have uploaded the correct one.
I just wanted to make you aware that I would need that in this packet.
There are several places where there are peculiar things, like eight or nine question marks in a row in one spot, and...
I must not have attached the correct, because I went through and I, and I thought I got all of those.
Well, I assumed that the question marks meant that you hadn't at that moment decided what to reference.
So the question mark, for instance, on traffic impact analysis.
Yeah, it's on page 37.
Yeah, that's just because I was being lazy and didn't look up the section. It's just referencing back to the existing section for traffic impact analysis, which is 17.52. I don't remember. And that's why I put the question marks in, and I did go back and change those. And I thought I hit revise attachment, but maybe I didn't save it.
It was kind of my assumption that you had, there's a number of like misspellings and things like that Matt just pointed out, that those things would be cleaned up when you put it into final ordinance form, I assume.
Yes, all the formatting, all the numbering and lettering sequences, any misspelling, grammatical errors, you know, any references to a section that is incorrect, that'll all be caught when we put it into ordinance format.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the, about those things, which I know you'll catch. It's the blank spaces that have me a little more concerned. It's like signing a paper without the numbers put in.
Annoyed that the correct one didn't get uploaded. I must not have saved it, because I know I went in and did it.
Emery?
Yeah.
I'll make a joke, but there's a reference to telecommunications or wireless communications on page 58. Did you mean to remove wireless communications from 1752 and place it in 1780? Or should that be in 1777, your application? Because that reference was confusing to me, and so I had to guess.
I did intend to put it in 1780, because 1780 is special uses, and that's kind of what that is. It's not really, in my opinion, it's not supplementary regulations and exceptions. It's more of, it's more criteria that would apply to special uses.
Well, what I did...
But if you don't agree, I'm fine with that.
...delete it from 1752 and add it to 1780 at the number 170, which is the next number. That's, that's what I did, guessing that's what you meant by this reference here.
Yes.
So, Richard, are you working off of a different version than we're seeing?
He's probably working off of the one that I fixed, that I thought I uploaded to your packet and must not have saved.
Okay.
So, let's see here, what can we do? I know that the criteria for adjustments are the same criteria that exist in the code right now.
Patty?
Yes?
In answer to your question, I'm working on the ordinance form, putting it in ordinance form. And so I was trying to interpret Anne Marie's section there on wireless communication. So what I've done, and you don't have this, is set forth all of that section in 1752, 270, strike it out, and then basically move it to 1780, 170. There, it's shown as bold and underlined, add it to the code. It's the exact same section, the only addition is the introductory text that Anne Marie wrote here.
Thank you.
How about if you guys ask me your questions and I will give you the answers?
That's a novel concept, I like that. Okay. So, I'll start with a, with a big sort of overarching question I have, and then we can go from there. On the surface, this looks very benign, but there are a couple of little tweaks that I consider to be somewhat radical. And I think that it changes the traditional historic function of the Planning Commission in terms of our decision-making on quasi-judicial items. Because I'm seeing language changes where Planning Commission is stricken, and in its place is Appointed or Elected Review Authority. Now, I understand that the Planning Commission is an appointed review authority, but something else could be too, or someone else could be too. So I'm not comfortable with the changes that appear to remove quasi-judicial decision-making from the Planning Commission.
Okay.
I mean, there are a number of places where that happens. I mean, you initially, you introduce it on page 12 when you start to talk about Type 3 procedure, and it says, "Decisions on quasi-judicial permits and applications are made by an appointed or elected review authority." I would assume that that would have read, "are made by the Planning Commission." And then later...
You changed that, that wasn't the intent.
Okay, well, when I go through then, later on in the document to the actual, basically red lines strike out in bolded sections, Planning Commission is consistently stricken, and...
Right, because it's replaced with Review Authority, Patty, and if you go to the table, you see that the Review Authority is Planning Commission.
So why strike, why strike it from the language then?
Because if we ever want to have a design review, or a historic review, or a historic review committee or commission, that would be a different review authority.
But they grow out of the Planning Commission typically, I mean...
No, no, they don't. Most jurisdictions, the design review and the historic review have nothing to do with Planning Commission, and it just sets it up for future.
Yeah, that's my concern, Emery, that it sets it up for future to where there would not be quasi-judicial decisions going through the Planning Commission. And I'm not comfortable with that. I think that Type 3 procedures should go through the Planning Commission. So, I'm...
All Type 3?
Type 3, I'm sorry, Type 3, not Type 2. I, you know, I'm not in favor of siloing planning decisions. We're a small community, we have consistency and enforcement issues that pop up periodically, and I, I think that siloing them in any other format is going to make holistic consistency between short-term and long-term planning difficult. So, I would, I would prefer to see the language left with Planning Commission and not have this sort of nebulous other description in there. If we need another section that explains that there may be design review committees or historic review committees or whatever, that would be fine. But to muddle the water on quasi-judicial decision-making for the Planning Commission, I don't, I don't agree with.
I have a question, kind of comment to follow up on what Patty's, Patty?
Yeah, go ahead, Kim.
So I kind of looked at that as well, and it kind of confused me, but then what I interpreted to mean was to refer you back to the chart that says, here's the appropriate decision-making party. For example, on some Type 3s, for example, a variance, only the director needs to make. And so that's the decision-making authority there, right?
And that, no, that's actually, that's a typo, and it should be, and Commissioner Nelson caught that, and Type 3 variance is the Planning Commission.
So Type 3s are always planning commissions on the chart?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, okay, so then that's, that's the reference back to the appropriate decision-making bodies.
Right, so, and my, my point, Kim, is, is why confuse it then by using a different terminology in the description? I, you know, I'd rather it be consistent. I, you know, I'd, I'd rather it be consistent, and the description in the table have the same language usage, so that if you read one and not the other, you're not confused. I mean, I looked at the table as a shorthand of the, of the longer descriptive section, so I, I would like it to be consistent with it. Okay. Other comments? Kim, I think I talked over you there at the end. Did you get your whole?
Um.
Thought out?
Yeah, then as I get to, as I was going back and looking at the general description, which I think is where you read from, where it says, um, "are made by an appointed or elected review authority." Um, so type-three is really by the planning commission as well as city council, correct?
Well, our comprehensive plan has some comprehensive plan map changes as either mi- minor or major. And so if it's minor, it would be a type-three. If it's major, it would be a type-four. Uh, if it's a minor comprehensive plan, uh, map change, then the planning commission recommends and the city council decides.
Right, so that's where it says appointed or elected. It's really appointed and elected, but that's what you're trying to say, it's was, maybe what Patty's trying to say, it's, "are made by the planning commission and city council?" Kind of word smoothing here, but.
Well, again, it depends on what it is, because if it's a type-three zone change, the recommendation is made by planning commission, but the decision is made by city council.
Right.
So, that's.
But in other.
What it should say.
But in other, uh, decisions, like for instance, um, you know, people come before us for conditional use or something like that. We are the last authority. If you wish to go beyond us, you have to actually appeal.
Right.
And so that's the difference between type-three and type-four. Type-four typically comes before the planning commission first, not always, but, uh, and then goes to the council by definition, whereas type-threes normally end at the planning commission unless they're appealed to the city council.
No.
Type-threes, they're not?
If it's a minor zo- if it's a minor zone change, or a minor comprehensive plan map amendment, as per our comprehensive plan, and this is from our comprehensive plan. If it's a minor, it's quasi-judicial. If it's a major, it's legislative. Quasi-judicial is type-three.
Understand.
So, if it's a minor, it comes before the planning commission for recommendation, it goes to city council for a decision.
Okay. I don't think that's a very common one.
It's not. It's just the way our comprehensive plan is written.
Okay, so that is the exception to that rule.
Mm-hmm.
Most of the time, pla- type-threes come to planning commission and end there at that decision unless they're appealed to a higher authority.
Right. Most of the time, zone changes are not type-threes. They're all legislative. But our, our comprehensive plan has it different.
Yeah. If I can change the subject. I was a little surprised further down in here, where you got that, actually down into how, what was the average flow rate for a lavatory faucet? Is that, does that kind of language typically appear in a land? Um, I'm on page, do you remember, forty-five?
Yeah, I, I know what you're saying, Lenny, because it seemed that about page forty-two, when the discuss- discussion started to focus on plan development, it, it became much more detailed in terms of what a plan development would be, rather than simply identifying the procedure by which you would process a plan development. Like, like from forty-two to forty-eight, it's really detailed all of a sudden.
Yeah, none of that is a change, you guys. That is in the code right now.
Yeah.
Now, it's in chapter seventeen fifty-two, and I'm moving it from seventeen fifty-two to seventeen seventy-seven.
Okay, does it appear in?
Looks like it's new, but it's not new.
Okay, but Anne Marie, does all of that detail appear anywhere else in the code? Or is this the only place where such a specific description of a plan development occurs?
Well, it's the only place, because it's the only place that refers to planned unit development process.
Oh.
So, there would be no other place that it would be referred to.
Okay.
And it's talking about density bonus standards.
Right.
It gets so detailed. But again, it's in the code right now.
Okay.
Uh, I'm not proposing any changes to the planned unit development.
Okay.
You guys want to change it? That's a whole nother topic.
Ah, sure. Okay, well, I can leave it to another time, but it seems to me that there would be a gen- more of a generic thing that said, uh, "public works, so decide what the energy saving is," whatever the current standards are.
Again, it's a density bonus standard, so it kind of is here and there what it is.
Yeah.
Because it's a bonus.
That's the other thing that was not clear to me. I mean, I sort of conceptually understand density bonus, but by the time I read through all of this, I don't think I understood all the thing, how you would get to any kind of real density bonus.
Well, I think the key takeaway here is that this is not changing. This is what's in the code right now. And the planned unit development process was not noticed as being changed.
Mm-hmm.
It's simply moving it from seventeen fifty-two to seventeen seventy-seven.
Okay.
Okay, I can live with that.
Um, Anne Marie, I noticed that, um, pre-application conferences are not recommended for type-four. Why is that? Now, wait a minute, I can give you a page number. I think it's page fifteen C. Pre-application conferences are not required for type-four applications.
Yeah, they're not required for any application.
Right, but they're recommended for three, correct?
Yes, mostly because, uh, most type-four applications, most of the time, are staff-initiated, their ordinance amendments. So, the public doesn't usually apply for type-four.
Oh, okay. Okay. Although, major zoning, if someone came in and was trying to do some major zoning change, hypothetically, that would be?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be, if someone was trying to re-zone twenty or more properties, several hundred acres, that would qualify as a type-four, and uh, I would guess they would come in for pre-application conference anyway.
Okay.
It's required, recommended or not.
Okay, um, I have one other question. Um, it seems to me that not long ago, we had to, we had to defer, um, a public hearing, because the noticing uh, only went out to people within two hundred and fifty feet, and it was to go out to five hundred feet. So, I'm ju- I didn't see anything in here that referenced any noticing of five hundred feet, so where would that have shown up in this document?
Well, that referencing is not in, uh, title seventeen. It's in title sixteen.
Oh.
Title sixteen also needs to be changed, but that's that's another task on the list.
Okay, so, all of the, all of all of types one, two, three, and four only require notification to two hundred and fifty feet?
Yes.
Okay. So, what was that one that needs five hundred? What type was that?
Well, right now, it's a subdivision application, and it's in title sixteen.
Okay.
So, uh, probably we'll need to, for consistency, we'll just need to, uh, so that we don't redo the whole title sixteen, we'll probably just need to strike that from uh, title sixteen in the, in the ordinance. Richard will need to change that five hundred to two fifty and refer to it as a type-three.
Okay. Richard, do you want, um, typos and things like that now, or? Should we assume you're gonna?
You can, uh, you can email me any corrections. I've, I, again, I've been working on putting this in ordinance format, so we've been catching those, and my assistants did that too. Uh, so, go ahead and just email them to me. There's no need to go through that tonight. I, I, I tonight, if you see any substantive questions, um, like, you know, I asked about the wireless communications, because I just wasn't sure. I think that's what you really want to hit on tonight. Uh, but go ahead and email it to me if you have a list, uh, or a markup. Just go ahead and send it to me, and I'll, I'll check your list against mine.
Okay, will do. Kim?
Uh, so, related to your two hundred and fifty-foot question, and this may be just education for me. Curious, is that just standard amongst all cities, or, or is that always the distance, two hundred and fifty feet? I, I've always wondered why that's such a small notice period, and why isn't it bigger in general, but that might be a different.
It's certainly something that the commission could recommend changing as part of this ordinance. It, I don't know where two hundred and fifty feet came from for the Lin- for Lincoln City. Uh, it is something that's specific to jurisdiction. I've worked in jurisdictions that have a thousand foot, some have five hundred, and some only have a hundred. Uh, it's just, it's jurisdiction by jurisdiction.
But they're generally relatively small. I mean, two hundred and fifty feet's like three-quarters of a football field kind of length, kind of thing, so.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't seem like it really affects that meal. Do you ever see them out there that are within one mile of, or anything like that?
No. I've never seen any that are that large.
Okay. Two fifty is a little low to me, but.
And they're never, they're never site-specific in terms of, you know, somebody may be more than two hundred and fifty feet away, but they may be positioned in such a way that their property would be impacted, either from a view shed question, or somebody, you know, being able to build above them and looking down in, that, it, it's not that specific, right? It's just a distance?
Correct.
And those are the only people that have to be notified, is the two fifty feet though, so if somebody else was affected, they just may not get notice.
Right.
Right.
But they can still attend the hearing.
That's why they have to watch all our meetings, Kim. Marcy, did you have a question?
That's it.
Um, no, I had a few questions after reviewing the packet, but they've all been addressed. Anne Marie got most of them in the staff report, so.
Okay. Um, Anne Marie, on page, on packet page twenty-nine, the section, um, seventeen point seven seven point zero three zero is titled "Appeal." And that seems like an odd title for that section. It seems that that's a section about conditional uses. So, why is it titled "Appeal"?
I am so angry with myself that I didn't, I don't know, I must not have hit save. Yeah, because it is "Appeal."
But it's not supposed to be "Appeal."
It is supposed to be "Appeal." It's all information underneath it is supposed to be for an appeal, not for a conditional use.
Oh.
Because we got conditional use.
Okay, so are we missing the section for conditional use?
No.
Are we missing the "Appeal" section?
Yeah.
Okay. Hmm. We can continue it. Well, I, um, you know, I, I, I have to say, I have never made a mistake like that, Anne Marie, so I'm shocked, but just kidding. Um, we've all made those, um, those kinds of save errors and mistakes. I'm just a little nervous then, especially since you're looking for a final.
Yeah.
Recommendation.
I understand that.
Going to the city council, and I just think it's not quite baked yet.
I am so annoyed with my, I cannot begin to tell you how annoyed with myself I am, because I fixed all of this.
I know. Like I said, we've all been there, so we know that. Well, I guess that.
I would be, uh, free to have a second meeting this week, if that, uh, short meeting, if, uh, you can do that for cleaning it up a little bit, if you want.
Hmm, I'm not sure how that works in terms of a public hearing process, because.
Yeah, I'm not either. That would be a Richard question.
Yeah, we have to leave the record open, and that means public, um, comment open. Richard?
Okay, if, if you want to continue this hearing, you can continue this hearing to another date, as long as it's a date certain. Um, and as long as we can provide public meeting notice, which means at least twenty-four hours.
Okay.
Um, Anne Marie, your section, um, do you think is, is missing from the packet? It's, uh, "Appeal," what, is it seventeen seventy-six?
Well, on, on my packet, page twenty-nine, it's identified as seventeen seventy-seven point zero three zero. It's titled "Appeal," but the description underneath it is all about conditional uses. So, I'm not sure what the number's supposed to be, but the "Appeal" section isn't there. You're, you're muted.
True. Um, okay, so I have what Anne Marie emailed to me, uh.
Yep.
The only thing on the seventeen seventy-seven zero three zero is the word "Appeal," and then A, "Procedure." Appeals are subject to type-three procedure as described in LCMC seventeen seventy-six zero five zero, and B, "Submittal Requirements." Type-three application submittal requirements are set forth in LCMC seventeen seventy-six zero five zero. Specific submittal requirements are provided on application forms and checklist as authorized in LCMC seventeen seventy-six one-ten. And there, that's all I have under the heading "Appeal." So, is that what's in the packet, or is there?
No, you know what?
I'm looking to see, Anne Marie's over there, she's not over there.
Um, yeah, no, that's not, that's.
I don't know if that's what it is.
Well, that I thought I saved and apparently did not.
Okay. Um, just one second, Lenny. Um, Richard, actually, under the "Appeal" section in our packet, it has a "Purpose" section that describes conditional uses. And then, under "Submittal Requirements," it does say, the number one says what you read, but then number two, it goes into "Application for Conditional Use." So, it's a little more jumbled up than I think it would be.
So, my question for Anne Marie is, is what I read the most recent version, or did you?
Yes.
It is?
Yes, I just.
I'm telling the commission, that's what was missing.
Yeah, I uploaded it to MinuteTrack, and I must not have hit "Save."
Okay, Lenny?
Well, it looks like, under "Appeal," if you skip down to B, that's what Richard read for an "Appeal." And C would be D, under "Submittal Requirements" for, uh, appeals, looks like.
But only number one. Number two is not.
Well, they have that, they're a little wonky.
And, um, and D is not.
Well, I think that what's happened there is the two got mixed together, and some of it got left out.
It was, no, it was a place saver, and I went back and I, and I changed it. And, and I uploaded it to, to MinuteTrack into your packet, but I must not have hit "Save."
Okay, let me ask, let me ask this question. Is this, um, I know that this is on the, um, city council agenda, but is, is approval of this time critical for anything?
Uh, not necessarily. Mm-mm. Uh, not necessarily, mm-mm.
David, um, I, I will note that, uh, some of the other ordinances refer to Type 1, Type 2, Type 3, Type 4 procedures.
Right.
Uh, because you have landscaping, uh, signs and designer view going to the city council. And I believe those ref-, those reference Type 1, Type 2. There are some reference issues. So some of those, um, now the ordinances are not on the agenda. So, and the next meeting would be of the city council, where those ordinances would actually be presented will be July 13th. So as long as you guys can make a recommendation, uh, we can, the ordinances can catch everything up. Uh, we're not acting on the ordinances, we're just having the public hearings.
Okay. All right, so we could, um, we could continue this public hearing to July 7th. Make a decision and get it then to the, the city council by the time that they're looking at the other ordinances that are predicated by these types, correct? Is that what I heard?
We, we would have the public hearing and the ordinance on procedures at the same meeting as the ordinances for the other three.
Right.
But we would have to, we usually don't stack them up like that, but we could do it for one. And as long as the others are separated, I, so I think it would work.
Okay, all right. Um, I, I would feel more comfortable doing that. I don't know, what's the pleasure of the other commissioners?
Well, I'd feel more comfortable with that too.
You would, Anne-Marie?
I sincerely apologize, I'm so upset with myself, I-
It's okay, like I said, we've all been there, so you buy cookies next meeting.
And send them through the computer.
All right, so, um, I need a, um, motion to continue the public hearing to July 7th.
Point of clarification, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Richard said something about other two. Is this all together in one, everything that was here tonight besides the three ordinance?
No, the, I, I think what he was referring to, if you recall, in the last few meetings we've had, we, um, grappled with the sign ordinance and landscaping and parking. And in each one of those ordinances, there are references to these procedures. And so we sort of did it a little bit backwards. And what's going to the council will be all of those ordinances and then the public hearing for this, um, procedure ordinance.
Okay, so everything that we hear tonight, that we got tonight that was not in reference to the tree ordinance is what we're talking about postponing?
That's correct.
All right.
Right. So, I need a motion.
I'm so moved.
All right, and a second?
And then-
Seconded by Marcy, thank you. And any discussion on this? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No, okay. So there you go, Anne-Marie, thank you. Sorry. All right, where are we? Any old business?
No.
Okay. Um, new business, we have a tree ordinance work session. And it is to discuss our current tree ordinance and possible revisions to it. So do you, um, want to tee this up for us, Anne-Marie?
Yes, the, the main impetus behind this is there is a prohibition of tree topping in the tree ordinance. And, uh, there's, uh, a citizen who appeared before city council and asked to consider revising that prohibition. And city council directed staff to look at the tree ordinance, uh, that specifically and in general, the whole ordinance. And so that is why we are here.
Could I ask when the tree ordinance was originally written? Because I thought we had a, uh, an old tree type of, uh, protection, but, uh, we didn't have, uh, tree ordinances as such.
I am checking right now to see when the last-
Miles, the tree ordinance discussion, we, we discussed the, the, the tree ordinance, um, actually, I, I think it's been a couple of years ago now. And there was some discussion at that time about how complicated our tree ordinance was for the general public and for, um, builders and developers to wade through. And so we put it on a list a while ago about something that the planning commission, um, would address and that we would take a look at and see how to simplify it, make it a little more user-friendly. I wasn't aware that, um, that there was a, a citizen-initiated, um, question about tree topping, but, um, I know we talked about maybe doing this a while ago.
I don't remember there ever, uh, being a tree ordinances as touch, uh, uh, I could, could be wrong.
Miles, this, the, the tree ordinance that we have in place right now looks like, well, different portion, there was some, some form of it in 1984, with the revision in 1992, one in 2002, one in 2008, one in 2010, one in 2011, and the most recent revision in 2015. So I, I, I'll just say, there's a number of things wrong with this current tree ordinance. It is very difficult to navigate and no one understands it. And when I say no one, I mean, um, the general public, developers, contractors, uh, planning staff and public work staff. Anytime anyone comes in with a tree removal question, uh, it takes us at least an hour for all of us to get together and muddle through the ordinance and try and understand what it's saying. It should not be that complicated. Additionally, it requires an arborist report in some cases, but the arborist report is not used for anything. So the requirement for an arborist report means nothing.
Yeah, I, I believe it should be a good, it should be part of the landscaping requirements and trees are a valuable asset and, uh, they've never been, uh, uh, treated as such. And, uh, I think, uh, Mrs. Hinton, uh, got them to recognize certain, uh, historical trees. Uh, but other than that, I don't know that, uh, and I built a house here. I don't know that in 2005. And I don't know that there were any requirements for, uh, trees.
The current code says that trees within 100, any tree within 100 feet of a building can be removed.
100 feet?
Yes.
Any tree within 100, I thought it was within 10 feet.
No, it's 100.
Okay.
It'd be clear cut most lots, I, I would say.
Kim?
That's right.
That was, that was kind of my reaction too, Patty. I think one of the things I've noticed since moving here and quite frankly, right next door to me, um, and, and then you go down to Olivia Beach, it doesn't seem to me that there's much enforcement of the tree ordinance. I mean, it just seems everything, if somebody wants to build on a lot, it's just clear. And for example, on a new lot right next to me, there was a 120-year-old tree that was taken down and the lot is now, you know, just, there's nothing there but little shrubs. And I know that they could have left some trees. And you go down to Olivia Beach and there's just, there's not much down there anymore. So I don't, I don't really see much of it.
Yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying, Kim. I mean, we've seen up here in the north end of Rhodes End, lots that are for sale that have no building permit on them, which seemed to be something that was required before you could start taking trees out in reading the ordinance, that had been clear cut as they're put up for sale. So there's no, um, plan for it. So I, I agree that, um, that it needs to be revisited, that for nothing else, it's confusing. I think if we revisit it, um, the enforcement issue would certainly be discussed. I know during the, um, the visioning process that we went through, there were a number of, um, strident comments about the need to preserve trees in the city and the significance of forested coastal areas that are rapidly disappearing. So, um, I, uh, I, I think it's, it's important to, to revisit this and to make it, um, to strengthen it and to give it, um, to justify the, the choices that are made and to put some teeth in enforcement. Um, and, you know, an arborist report, um, should be used for some decision-making purposes. They're expensive to have done and it's a shame to do them and, and then not use them to identify either trees of significance or, or diseased trees. I mean, it could go either direction, so. Matt, did you have a comment?
Um, I, 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 I did and you more eloquently put it out forth than I could.
Okay, done. Kim?
Well, just an additional comment. So one of the things is I read through this pretty diligently, like it refers to a, a tree board in there somewhere. Um, do we even, does that even exist?
No, no, we don't have a tree board.
You refer things if you're not going to do it. And then, and then do, you know, to what, to what extent do tree trimming services and excavation companies have any culpability, I guess? Because I guess we've seen people around me that just call in a, a tree trimmer and it's like, yeah, I want that cut and I want that cut and I want that cut. And they just go cut it. And I don't see any oversight, so.
Well, and, and again, that goes back to, the current ordinance has provisions for removing trees without a permit and it has provisions for removing trees with a permit. So on a developed lot, removal of trees is allowed without a permit, um, provided the lot is not capable of further division and the trees are within 100 feet of the dwelling. Well, most of the lots are 50 by 100, uh, so they're not capable of further division. And the trees are certainly within 100 feet of the dwelling. So no permit is required. They can trim or remove any tree they want in those, in those cases. Unless it's been designated as a protected tree as part of a, a planned unit development. Then you get into, uh, where there's, where a permit is required. as long as they meet the qualifications for tree removal and they get the permit, well, now let me back up. As long as they meet the qualifications for tree removal, essentially, we have to issue the permit. Um, which again, is within 100 feet of a dwelling. So if an adjacent lot is owned by the same owner of, of the developed lot and the trees are within 100 feet of a dwelling, with a permit, that that lot owner can remove all the trees on that undeveloped lot that are within 100 feet of dwelling on the developed lot with a permit. Does that make sense? So what it comes down to is that the 100 feet, pretty much, the 100-foot rule allows for a lot of tree removal. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, it pretty much allows you to clear cut a lot.
It does, when the lot is 50 by 100.
Yeah. And there's, there, as I recall reading it, there's really no, there's some mention about, um, they're not called heritage trees, but something else. But there's no, I don't understand what those are. I mean, it, it, as I think Miles mentioned, um, Councilor Hinton, um, did some work to protect some Sitkas up in the, um, first developments around, on the way up to, to the villages. But I'm not sure that there's a lot of teeth in, um, in the ordinance currently that would protect trees, I would call them trees of significance or significant value trees. So it, it seems to me that, um, uh, we all are probably in agreement that, um, the tree ordinance needs to be worked on, needs to be revised. And we need to figure out how to most efficiently do that. You, um, you included in our packet a, um, urban tree ordinance development workbook that was, um, fascinating to read. And, um, you know, it, it starts as, as, as all good, all good ordinance developments do with getting some sort of working group together, um, which seems like a good idea to me. There's some, you know, there's some knowledge out there in the public of, um, trees, certainly more than, than I, I think what I know, um, technically about them. There's obviously been some, um, really cutting-edge research done on the value of not just trees, but tree systems and how they interact with each other. So that taking out one tree, um, can absolutely have a profound effect on all the other trees around it. And so, so there's a lot of information out there that I think would be valuable to pull together to develop an ordinance. And I think, um, it needs to be about trees. It, I don't want to muddle it about, um, other landscaping requirements or anything like that. I think we need to be looking at trees and the tree canopy and the significance of that to the city and to the people in the city. And then how we acknowledge, um, you know, the strong support that was voiced during the visioning process for preserving as many trees as we can in the city. That was the message I got. And we can certainly go back to the visioning document and pull the actual language from it. But I think that there's, um, you know, it needs to be about the trees and we need to have some clear idea of what we're trying to accomplish with this ordinance. And then as Kim pointed out, um, we need some teeth in it. So there's some enforcement, uh, that can occur. And consequences for those who decide to, um, ignore the, the ordinance and do what they want on a piece of property. So, um, what is the rest of the commission think? Miles?
Uh, I'd like to know if there's a, uh, good arborist in the community or in Lincoln County that could come up and give us a tutorial on, uh, what we should be looking, uh, for. Because I think the tree ordinance is an important part of developing, uh, planning for, uh, the Nelska Gap area. And there's a, uh, sidewalk connectors and, uh, trees. And I can remember in Portland, Oregon, when they planted the first trees in, on the Transit Mall, they all died because there wasn't a, uh, big enough area for, uh, the root system for the, uh, trees. And they had to replant, uh, them.
Yeah, it's, it's good idea to get, you know, probably, um, talk to somebody at Connie Hansen Gardens who would know, um, you know, or maybe be able to identify an arborist. That we certainly need to be able to pull in those technical, uh, individuals to, to make this right. Matt?
Um, kind of along that same line of thinking, um, uh, when Miles, uh, said Nelska Gap- Um, kind of along that same line of thinking, um, uh, when Miles, uh, said Nelska Gap, one of the things that pops up is, uh, the, uh, deer population that we have here. Uh, they need large green spaces in order to move. When we take that away, and I've seen this happen when I was at, uh, school in Ashland, they took away more and more of the green spaces that the deer were, uh, moved through, and that caused more traffic accidents, that caused more interaction with those deer and people. And they're, the deer ended up losing out, but I, that's, the, the, um, preservation of green spaces and the interaction with nature, that's why people come here. Those are one of the things that were identified in, um, in, in, in a lot of the things that, that people like about Lincoln City and want to preserve about Lincoln City. And I think that's important to keep into consideration here as we go forward of how do we preserve our green spaces? And a lot of that is going to be centered around trees and the ecosystems that they provide. So maybe not just an arborist, but, um, uh, like you were saying, uh, uh, that there's been a lot of research done into trees and their impact on the environment and, uh, urban development, and, um, maybe we can, uh, find somebody to talk to us about that and, and those effects as well.
Yeah, it'd be nice to get this in before the villages kicks off, too.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes, me. I'm all for participation. I think it's a lovely idea. But I can see that if we're going to do all the things you're talking about, you aren't going to see a tree ordinance for probably a year, a year and a half.
No, you don't know me very well, Lenny.
I know how long it takes to tell people there are meetings and get arborists here and yada, yada, yada.
It depends on how many people you have in a meeting. I mean, I, I agree, if you open it up to have a visioning process with 25 or 30 people, but if you limit it and, and as, you know, was pointed out in the material that you sent out, Anne Marie, which I thought was interesting, is that sometimes you don't want the high-profile people in the city because they like to be heard. So they have a hard time not just talking and moving things forward. So, I mean, I would, I would, you know, love to see a small group, um, of people tackle this and, um, and move it forward and bring back some type of, um, draft that we could then, um, kick around. And we can put time limits on it. So, we're all home. We all have time on our hands. Yeah, Kim?
Anne Marie, I just had a question. Can you say a little bit more about the, the, I guess it's a citizen that was particularly concerned about tree topping? What was their issue?
They want true, uh, this person and, and from what I understand, some of his neighbors want to allow tree topping because the trees are so tall that the trees are blocking their view of the ocean.
Thank you.
Ah, okay. Yeah, Matt?
I was under the impression that tree topping was generally, um, frowned upon because it is, uh, harmful to the overall health of the tree in general.
It is.
I, and so that's why we prohibit topping, is because that can lead to a dead tree, and then that very tall tree becomes a very dead tree, and then that very dead tree falls very, it falls over.
Yeah, there are very few species that can tolerate topping. That's, that's called a hedge.
Yeah.
So not necessarily a tree. Um, okay, so, um, I, I like the information that you sent us. I think some of the, um, some of the bullet points are important. I would, um, add a few of them. I think that there, um, there was a checklist on, I think, page 107 and 108, um, sort of the structure of a, of an ordinance. And, um, I didn't see in the, I mean, it has lines that you can add things, which is great, because I didn't see a, a comment in there about, um, public safety and in terms of dead, dying, diseased, or fire suppression needs in terms of, of a tree ordinance. I would think we would need to have something like that in there as well. But, but I think that what you sent us, um, this sort of how-to guide, um, is helpful and would be a, a good start to taking the ordinance that we have. I'm a little curious about the tree board tree ordinance questionnaire. Can you speak to that at all? That's been included here. Who did that, who was that to go to? You know what I'm talking about? It starts on page 112 of the packet. Let me get there. You know, it could be something that just a small group that's developing it could work through, but, um...
Isn't that part of the workbook?
It's on page...
It is. Which page, Patty? It starts on, uh, 112. It's just a series of questions, questionnaire.
Yeah, it, it's, uh, uh, Kim's correct. It's, it's part of that, uh, workbook in developing. So it's just a tool that, if you want to, uh, present to the community or a group in the community, uh, to get their thoughts on, on these, on the different questions.
Okay, but it, it could be used in a smaller group setting just to...
Sure.
...the discussion as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, and, um, has, do you know if there has been any discussion in the city in terms of, um, with regard to developers in terms of incentivizing preservation of trees? So in other words, you know, I know that sometimes a developer will come in and, you know, the, the, the quickest, fastest way to build something is to bulldoze the whole lot clear and then start from bare ground and build what you want to build, and then you've got easy access with all your equipment, yada, yada, yada. But so many of our lots now that are available are infill lots, and there are trees on them. Or, um, or you look at the villages, there's a lot of trees up there. And I'm wondering, is there, has there been any discussion within the city of making incentives for developers so that they, um, get a cut in some fee or something if they can preserve trees on the property?
I am not aware of any such discussion. I'm not sure what fees would be cut. System development charges can't be cut, and those are the main fee.
How about a park development?
What was that, Lenny?
Park development? Do we have a park development fee?
A park development?
Yeah, that, that's part of the system development charge, uh, but that money goes to creating new parks.
Well, there seemed to be some discussion in here about, um, almost like a banking system, where if you couldn't preserve the trees on your lot, you could contribute to, uh, planting trees in some public area. Is that, is that the parks development? Is that coordinated through that?
That would be, yeah, yeah, that would be coordinated through parks and rent.
Okay.
Um, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the only problem with that kind of thing is, is that almost any developer, unless you make that amount that they have to contribute fairly onerous, would much rather knock down a tree and work than to put money and put a few thousand dollars in this, in a savings account. I don't find that, what I'm trying to say is that I don't find that as a very successful way of encouraging, uh, developers to leave trees because it's such an easy out for them.
Um, so a mitigation banking you're talking about?
Yeah, mitigation banking. Unless you make, like I say, you know, if it's $10,000 a tree, now you're talking, you're serious, but...
Right.
If it's $500 a tree, well, for the amount of time it saves them, they would gladly put in $500.
Sure, yeah. Well, yeah, you'd have to calculate it somehow so that it made it an advantage for them as opposed to just, um, you know, pay the fee and move on.
Yeah.
Good thing. Okay, what, um, oh, the only other thing I was going to ask about was you included, believe, an ordinance, I wasn't quite sure what it was until I started reading it. It's from Portland, is that? Okay.
It's City of Portland's tree ordinance, and it's an option system. So, uh, when developers do a development, they have to meet one of those five or six, I forget
Yeah, six.
...options. Um, and it was just, I, I just put that in there as food for thought information. It seems to work quite well, um, for Portland. So if, if the commission wanted to devise some type of an option system...
That's an example of it.
It, it, it's an example, a starting point, you know, certainly, um, revise it to fit Lincoln City.
Okay. Are there, are you aware of any tree ordinances in coastal Oregon towns that may be more analogous to Lincoln City?
No, not really.
Okay.
Coastal towns don't seem to really have tree ordinances. I can do a little more research on it, um, but it doesn't seem to be a prevalent item.
I think you should do some additional, uh, survey of coastal communities, and then we should be a leader in developing a, uh, a good tree ordinance.
So, uh, I, I think it would be great to have, um, a couple of, maybe three, um, commissioners on a subcommittee to, um, work on this and maybe, um, pull in expertise, uh, as necessary and, uh, try to pull something together. Um, how does that sound?
That sounds good. And one of the people you might definitely want to have is Josh because that's his background, his environment.
Hmm. Well, I would be hesitant to put him on it without him being here, although I have been known to do that before to people.
That, which is to be, to be...
But I would certainly, certainly approach Josh and see if he has time, um, to, to put something else on his plate. I know he's, he's gearing up to dredge the, the D-Lake soon, so, um, any, anyone else interested in being involved in this?
Well, I, I have a question and, uh, comment about the, uh, so our current ordinance calls for a tree board, but we don't have one?
Right.
So, and we're, and we're going to work on redoing the ordinance. Well, the, what I noticed was the workbook really emphasizes that the community vision is the most important place to start from. And you mentioned some visioning that was done, and I was just kind of curious, I mean, you said it was about five, if the last ordinance was done in 2015, that's fairly recent, I think, for...
Yeah, the visioning was done a year and a half ago.
Oh, okay. So do we still have that around that would be accessible and we wouldn't have to start from scratch?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, we have that document. It's, it wasn't specific to trees, but when we asked people what they wanted, essentially, it was a 25-year visioning process. What do you want Lincoln City to look like in 25 years?
It's the Imagine Lincoln City project.
It's the Imagine Lincoln City. And I'm, I bring it up for two reasons. One, because we were told that this would be used in the future for future development of things like this, um, and also to support our comp plan review. And secondly, I bring it up because I recall several comments in it related to trees. So it says, it's a data point we can start with to say, all right, you know, during the visioning, there were people who were quite concerned with the clear cutting and the, um, I, just to put it in a more positive light, the, the preservation of trees in Lincoln City and how it's an identifier for the community. So I think there's some good language in that visioning document that we can pull as at least the start of an intent statement.
Yeah, because I noticed our current code, the intent statement, is a little bit weak, and there wasn't much in it that actually really speaks to the value of trees. And also, and also, um, encouraging tree, like new trees in public spaces. There wasn't really anything emphasizing that. And that's something I've always thought about, especially the Ocean Lake part of town, where, you know, the trees are all off in the distance. There's nothing, there's nothing even really...
Yeah.
...by, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. I mean, I was sort of struck by the human-centric definition of the value of trees, and it...
Right.
...a lot to do with habitat or connection to the ecosystem. So, um, yeah, it, it needs some work. Kim, you want to be on the committee? Okay.
I would like to be.
Lenny, you would like to be? Okay. All right. I, um, would like to be. Miles, you want to be on the committee?
Ooh, wait a minute. Could four of us be on the same subcommittee? That's a majority of the board.
Yeah, we, we need to limit it to three.
Yeah, it's got to be three.
We need to limit to three. So, okay.
Trees are not my expertise, and I, so I'm okay not, you know, be something.
Well, as long as I can reserve the right to come in and provide some technical information, then I won't be, be, uh...
Um, I just want to point out that a subcommittee is still required to comply with public meetings law, so it would have to be a notice, even if it's less than a quorum. So three members of a subcommittee, even if it's less than a quorum, have to comply with meetings law. So that means, uh, the meeting's recorded, it's noticed, um, minutes are taken.
Okay, all right. Even if it's three?
You're more interested in being on it. I'm more willing to yield to you if you want.
Now that you know it'd be public.
No, that wasn't the case. I just...
Well, uh, okay, so, so even if it's, so a subcommittee of, it doesn't matter what the number is, a subcommittee is a subcommittee.
It's an example in the AG's Public Meetings Manual. You create a subcommittee, that subcommittee has to comply. The only way to avoid public meetings law is have a subcommittee of one. So you have a subcommittee, the subcommittee's meetings must be noticed, minutes must be taken.
Okay. All right, all right. You still, still game to do it? Miles?
Yeah, I'm, I'm game, but I don't have to participate if I...
Lenny?
Yeah, fine.
Okay. All right. Kim, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to be involved.
Okay.
I think it would be, uh, I think your skills would be, would be, uh, very useful. I'll just give you books. All right, all right. So, um, we can talk about scheduling it at some point, um, and noticing it. Is that the way we would move forward, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Uh, any other comments, concerns, questions about the tree ordinance? I think, um, um, speed is, um, important when I get it going. How far in advance do the meetings have to be noticed, Richard?
Uh, no less than 24 hours.
No less than 24 hours. Okay, all right. So maybe the, the three of you can, um, um, figure out when a nice time to meet would be, and you can still do it on Zoom, and just open it up as a, as, um, a public, public meeting. Does the public need to be able to comment?
They don't need to be able to comment?
Public meetings law is a public attendance law, not a public participation law.
Right, okay, great. Okay, so it can be noticed and then they can observe?
I have one last thing about the, uh, the tree stuff. In our current ordinance, I was looking through, and I didn't see, um, uh, what is it? Uh, nuisance plants, um, that is in the other ordinance example, but not in ours. Um, I, I think that's an important distinction because those are like non-native things or it's... or stuff that...
We have a separate noxious...
Noxious.
Plant section in our nuisance code.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to keep this streamlined, I think, to trees.
Yeah.
But I think, and I think you can get, you can get at that by acknowledging the species that are acceptable, you know, that we don't necessarily want eastern species of trees planted out here. It'd be nice if they were indigenous, you know, trees to the area and are compatible with the habitat and such.
Dangerous and nuisance trees are mentioned. Sorry.
Oh, yeah, just thinking of things like holly and hawthorn that are common, that get big, that are, can look like trees or take on a tree form, but are commonly, more commonly removed than not.
Okay. The other thing I didn't see that would be nice, if you guys would think about, would be the concept of memorial trees, the trees that people could plant or work with the city to plant in parks, city parks and such that are trees as a memorial to someone. I know other cities use that as a means of getting more trees planted. It was something to think about.
I did that, we did that once for a member of the paddle, which at one time was a conservation group for a lake. We planted along the pathway that's up on Northeast Port, and we put a nice plaque in front of it that we had specially made. It took them two weeks to tear a plaque down.
To do what?
Tear the plaque down.
Oh, well, maybe it doesn't get a plaque. Maybe it's simply a memorial and you know what it's for.
Yeah, well, yes, that's the problem.
If we didn't do anything because someone might mess it up, we might as well just go home and, or stay home and not do anything.
In terms of noticing meetings and things like that is, that's something we can, little we go through to help send those notices out.
James?
Yeah, you want to go through James, and he'll do the, the notice. Basically, it's just a notice that gets sent to the, to the media and posted on our website.
Pretty simple. Okay. Okay, and I would appreciate if maybe you could have your first get-together before our next meeting so that we can get at least a, a heads up on what, what you've been doing and any help that you might need moving forward, all right? Okay.
And I will, tomorrow I will do a, a quick search of the coastal cities and forward them to all of you i- if there are any specific tree ordinance for the coastal cities.
Great, great, okay. And, you know, I'm encouraging all of you, if you have ideas or thoughts, to send them over to Kim, Miles, and, and Lenny so that they have your ideas as well on this, all right? They're just gonna, they're gonna take the lead. All right, anything else on the tree ordinance? Nope, okay. Where are we? Planning Commission training, any training tonight?
None tonight.
None tonight. Reports and comments, anything? Nope. Future agenda items and next meetings. I, I know one thing that's going to be on our next meeting. I suspect we're going to see procedures, right?
Yes.
Okay, anything else?
The subdivision.
The subdivision?
Yeah, the 40 lot subdivision for attached houses.
Okay, all right, anything else?
That is it, and we don't have any other applications, any other public hearings for not only the next meeting, but the following meeting, we would have had to have already received to have noticed. So at this point, there's, there's nothing for the, the second meeting in July.
So maybe we can, maybe we can bring the tree, tree ordinance back for maybe an, an update, maybe a further discussion with the full planning commission on the tree ordinance the second meeting in July?
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
I'll add an agenda item for that.
Okay. Is there any update on the, the status of the master plan of the villages? Where is that? What's the, no?
Well, it's been approved. There's a, there's an approved master plan.
Okay.
Someone just needs to submit to do the next phases. The approved preliminary master plan doesn't expire until, I believe, 2023.
Okay, I, for some reason, thought there was something else that was coming back to us, but there isn't anything coming back to us on there.
The only thing that would come back to you is when and if the direction is given to create the, the residential zone that complements the comprehensive plan map designation that was created. And then it would have to be created, and then it would have to be implemented. The commercial zone, of course, has been created, but it has not been implemented.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Good to go to the other, yes, Kim?
Question for Anne Marie, or maybe it's just process. So, for example, the, the issues that we approved earlier this year, the, what is it called, Skinner and, and annexation and things like that? Do we ever get feedback as to the planning commission as to what ultimately happens in the city council? Or is it just up to us to listen in and attend the council meetings to know what happened?
I, I can certainly let you know. It hasn't, they, they haven't decided yet. The public hearings were at the last city council. The public hearing for the Spruton Rezone was held and it was closed. And deliberations will take place at the next city council meeting, which will be on Monday. So I, as of yet, don't know what city council will do with that. And the annexation of the 11.15 acres, the applicant chose to continue that public hearing to August. And the reason for that continuing is to request a statutory development agreement that has not been, that application has not been submitted as of yet.
So will we always kind of get feedback as to how those go? I mean, I was using those as examples, but going forward? Is it more of our meeting to say, okay, this was approved at council or not approved at council or anything?
Yeah, I, I try to do that.
Okay. Good, sounds good, thanks.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? No? All right, here comes the bell. We're adjourned. Okay.
Thank you, thank you all.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, everybody.